Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for May 2. We will begin the meeting as is customary with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for a pledge to the flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we now have time for public comment. Any takers? Not? I will move on to move on to the approval of the minutes of our workshop of April 17th and our public meeting of April 18th.
And I'll second the motion. I did make a few suggestions there for corrections.
I wanted to just mention that on one particular vote was on the ARPA funding, Commissioner Letts asked that there be a sort of a narrative on the on the dissenting vote. And I guess I need a little direction because we traditionally just or historically just put yeas nays and what how those were counted and not either on the EA side or the NA side, you know, an explanation of the vote. So she's requesting that be part of the minute. So if these were as presented, if you want to add that in there, then
400,000 was missing and zero and a two. There was a two that needed another O. And then I asked to just have one brief sentence that that said, basically, the dissenting vote was to hear all presentations for ARPA funds before making a decision.
So I prepare to present on the
procedurally, you would have a motion to amend the minutes. Right. And I would make a motion to amend the minutes to correct that zero as mentioned. Errors. I'll make that motion right now.
And could you add my dissenting vote? Like when when the courts rule, there's always, if there's a dissenting vote, you get to hear that.
These are this isn't a court.
I'm just saying it's
recap of
I made my motion. If you'd like to make an additional
Well, second your motion.
Limiting it to the dramatic or the Okay, any discussion on that? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs. So moved. Okay, we have that taken care of. Now I'll take a motion on the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to add to the minutes for approval, a brief explanation of the dissenting vote. As I previously stated.
I'll second the motion so that we can discuss and and take a vote on that.
Okay, let's discuss it.
Special, if I know and be in favor of that, if you'd like to make a statement to them, I think you can do that directly via letter or whatever. If it's necessary to put in the minutes.
Yeah, I don't want to change our procedure that we've been following for, you know, as long as I've been on the board, that we don't go into the political, you know, interpretations of why we voted a certain way. I don't want to support that. I want to leave it just the way it is.
There are times that we have included explanations. And it's not always, but if it's requested by the dissenting commissioner, I think that it should be allowed.
Okay, any other discussion? Not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Aye. Motion fails to one. Without explanation. Okay, now we need to amend the
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to, and we got this for the last minute request from the Expo Board for letter of support that they're applying for grant, and I would ask that we add this item to the agenda for action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We amend the agenda. To conclude that, we'll probably put it in Jamie at the end after the former agenda is taken care of. Okay. Um, on favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. So moved. Mrs. Newland. Morning.
Hey, we had receipts on April 30th and May 1st of $2,363,294.88. Excuse me. That brings us to a total cash of $9,110,254.29. We had expenditures of Our undistributed tax claim is $107,577.17. That leaves us a balance of $7,167,019.52.
Make a motion to approve the treasurer's report as presented.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions regarding the treasurer's report? Are you none or all in favor? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs. So moved. Any other items?
He's a company called Palmetto Posting to get us information that in her postings for tax claim for our sales coming up. And we've been with them since 2013. The last time they changed their price was in 2019, and they are going up this year to by $2.50. And then they have it billed in for the next three years also, $2.50.
Is that a pass through?
Pardon?
Is that a pass through?
Yes, because those costs are actually added collectively. We get paid back for that.
Is there a motion to?
Come off and note through by naming.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this Palmetto agreement. Any questions?
I can just add, she said up $2, but I'm not sure if we covered the amount. So typically, it's $25 per posting. Now it's 27.50, and then oh, it's 27.
It'd be $25.
25 for 24, 27.50 for 25, 30 and 32.50. That's four years. I just wanted to put the numbers in perspective.
Okay. Sorry, okay with that. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs. So moved. Take one. So. Pardon? Introduce yourself and then or yours.
Director of Human Resources. Nelson Stanley. Personnel transactions, resignations, determinations. Diane McKinney, part-time receptionist, Community Action Partnerships, resignation effective May 15. Amen Nasser, casual part-time correctional officer at the jail, resignation effective the last working day of March 7. Erin Ayala, full-time correctional officer at the jail, resignation effective the last working day of May 5. Jonathan Vasquez, full-time correctional officer at the jail, termination effective April 29th, with the last working day being March 3. Allison Frazier, District Justice Office Support 1 at MDJ Disingers Office, resignation effective May 3. Mary Miller, Office Support 2 of Probation Services, resignation effective May 3. And Beau Moir, full-time deputy sheriff in the sheriff's office, resignation effective August 26.
Make a motion to approve the resignations and terminations.
Motion and a second on the floor. Any questions? Are you none or all in favor? Please indicate by saying aye. Those same signs. So moved.
ARPA Court's Office up to a 12-week leave of absence effective April 3, 2024.
Motion to approve that leave.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move that LOA. Any questions? Are you none or all in favor? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs. So moved.
The changes of status, transfers and promotions. I have three motions. The first to approve the recommendation of Daniel Hogg, Chief Information Officer of the Information Technology Services Department, to reclassify one of her current vacant programmer slash analyst positions at a grade 15 on the non-union salary chart to an IT technician position at a grade 13 on the non-union salary chart, effective immediately.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that request of our of Daniel Hogg. Any questions? Are you none or all in favor? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs. So moved.
Motion to approve the recommendation of Daniel Hogg, Chief Information Officer of the Information Technology Services Department, to reclassify a current vacant operations specialist position at a grade 13 on the non-union salary chart to an administrative assistant 2 position at a grade 10 on the non-union salary chart, effective immediately.
Motion approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that IT request. Any questions?
Just make a comment. Both of these are reflective of kind of a shift. You know, this first one particularly is was a position for a programmer analyst and and programming is much less needed. And as we shift, we have a couple of more steps to take to shift away from a mainframe system to what we've been using and cloud and such. So this is this is reflective of just a shift to what the department is really doing and more of a, you know, technician type networking, that type of thing. So just wanted to point that out.
It's unusual that it's the steps it's going down to.
Yeah.
Any other comment on this motion? Are you none or all in favor? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs. So moved.
Motion to approve the recommendation of the voluntary slash circuit courts Barbara Smith to add a third interpreter stipend in the clerk of courts office budget at the rate of $1,500 annually, effective May 1, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded second to prove the fonetary's request. Any questions? Are you none or all in favor? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs. So moved.
Air Soto Promotion from Secretary C in the District Attorney's Office to juvenile service provider at the rate of $1,396.3 by weekly, effective May 13.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve District Attorney Hess's request. Any questions? Are you none or all in favor? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs. So moved.
For other transactions, Airy Agency on Aging would like to hire Catherine New as an aging care manager 2 at the rate of $1,661.28 by weekly, effective May 13. Airy Agency on Aging would like to hire Michelle Allen as a part-time senior center manager 1 at the rate of $17.43 per hour, effective May 13. The share would like to rehire Alan Yanks as a casual part-time security officer at the rate of $13.05 per hour, effective May 6. Luden County Correctional Facility would like to hire Heather Deal as Deputy Warden of Operations at the rate of $2,730.50 by weekly, effective May 6. President Judge Tewock would like to hire Lisa Wolf as an Office Support 2 at the rate of $1,131.44 by weekly, effective May 13. And the Renova Center would like to hire Heather Hoover Rockmore as a full-time residential services coordinator at the rate of $1,723.75 by weekly, effective May 20.
Make a motion to approve the new hires and rehires as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those transactions. Any questions? Are you none or all in favor? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs. So ordered.
Moving on to salary board motion to approve all transactions previously read plus the following. Helen Gomez, General Clerk C/ Interpreter for Fonetary/Court's Office, adding interpreter annual interpreter stipend of $1,500, pro-rated, effective May 6, 2024. Go both.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the salary board transactions. Any questions? Are you none or all in favor? Please indicate by saying aye. Those same signs. So moved.
Morning, Robert.
Good morning.
Introduce yourself and proceed.
I'm Bob Dowd, Director at the Department of Emergency Services. And this morning I have two items for the Board to take action on. First is a change order. Uh, this is for the electrical contractor in our building. Total amount of the change order is $42,629.84. Uh, this the majority of this change order is the wiring for all of our um outdoor networking, security and cameras, all the things that weren't part of the bid, so we were expecting this. And that's $37,338 of this new tour.
When you say it wasn't part of the bid, that was actually in the interest of time. Correct. The the design for the for the intercom wasn't finished.
Yeah, the
went to bid, but we knew that we have to
Right, and the engineering for all of this piece had not been had not been done by the security contractor. It just wasn't completed in time for the bid, so we knew this was uh, everything else on here is little changes. You know, we've had to change a few outlets to match uh, equipment, change some wiring to match equipment. Uh, and then there is a credit uh, that was given to us. We, in the interest of of not delaying our switchgear delivery, uh, we opted to skip the factory testing. We do testing on site. It's part of the bid. Now, they were supposed to fly us down and basically do that onsite testing, so they gave us a credit.
Can you explain to me what an osmosis circuit breaker is?
That there's a reverse osmosis system that provides very, very clean water to the immunification system.
So it is one.
Yeah.
And so you're saying they test, they tested it onsite rather than going down?
Right.
Oh, and is it now passed?
No, it's not done yet. We are so close. There is one more thing that has to happen. Uh, the natural gas generators, two generators. The natural gas generator is waiting for some work to be done. Change the gas pressure. Uh, once that's complete, both the generators will be functional, and they will come out and do the complete um commissioning of the switchgear.
And do you have a timeline on that?
We don't. I will take the stab at it and say it will happen in the next 30 days. But don't hold me to that, please.
Okay.
Said that before, I've been really wrong.
Right, we need a motion to approve these changes.
I'll make a motion.
Second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Or director, any?
Just to give you a quick status of
We just spoke. Oh, thank you.
So it's of the 1.47
Like I said, we'll go after you finish this.
Yeah, there's been 822,000 spent, debate and quits.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs. So moved. Number two.
All right, next thing is asking commissioners to authorize a purchase agreement with Metad uh, First Energy, actually, for a one acre parcel of land. Uh, this is off of Mount Wilson Road in in South Angleton Township. It's a tower site. They actually have a tower there, which is great because we don't have to go through a lot of uh work to get the site approved for a tower. The tower will have to come down. I know it will go up, but otherwise it's a very turnkey site for us, which is excellent. Total amount purchased is $5,200, which is very
Make a motion to approve the purchase of the um First Energy Tower site on Mount Wilson Road.
Second.
This is just one tower site. Source of the money for this, or
This is, well, the the site itself is just a small kind of a square site, right?
Yeah, it's a
It's a property, you know, it's where the tower sits. So, yeah. I don't know if that answers your question, or who asked it. It's not a big parcel. It's just a footprint.
All all the tower infrastructure is ARPA eligible and includes the the property, which is
I think I may have this one confused with the sliver of with the bridge thing.
Oh, that's that's Matt next. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, did we do a motion yet?
Again, yes.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any questions further? Not all in favor? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs. So moved. Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you, Bob.
Morning.
Morning.
Solicitor, nice to see everybody. I just have one item for the Board this morning. Uh, this is a permanent right of way and easement agreement between the county and Harry and Melissa McBride. They live along Nickers Road in Heidelberg Township. This is pertaining to the uh County Bridge Project, Red Rock Bridge, as it's commonly known. Uh, this easement uh is a permanent easement in the sense that there will be a guardrail that's going to be placed along the property, the easement area is approximately 2,026 square feet. Uh, the the amount, the consideration amount for this easement is $1,000. Uh, that's an amount that's been agreeable between Jamie, myself and the uh the property owners. And I will note that the property owners have been uh very gracious and cooperative throughout this entire process, and they've been uh a pleasure to work with. And a lot of people are looking forward to this bridge project in that area. So I would just ask that the Board consider uh entering into this permanent right of way and easement agreement with the McBrides.
Make a motion to approve that agreement.
Second.
Motion of second on the floor to approve this uh right of way and easement agreement. Any questions regarding the motion for that? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs. So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, of Jamie, thank you.
Uh, the proclamation first uh for police uh National Police Week uh in recognition of Police Officer Memorial Day, which is May 15.
That's the 14th. Oh, is it different than the day we're doing it?
Yeah, Police Memorial Day is May 15. This proclamation is declaring May 14. This is Police Officer Memorial Day, Levin County. That's the day of the service. So um first declaring this uh May 12 through the 18th as Police Week and further encouraging citizens in in the county of Levin to observe May 14 as Police Officers Memorial Day, honoring those officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or become disabled in the performance of duty. And there will be a ceremony in front of the building here at 10 a.m. on the 14th. I think you all have that on your schedules, so just announce that as well.
Make a motion to approve the police officer's memorial proclamation.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions regarding this proclamation? Without all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Thank you.
Those same signs. So moved.
Yeah, I have three uh requests for hotel tax grant funds. First is from the Spin Stock Flow Arts Festival. They are celebrating their 10th year on June 8. And in the past, the Commissioners have supported this program by uh funding, in part, funding billboards throughout South Central Pennsylvania. And last year, their attendance doubled. Expect that growth to continue. So they are asking for a grant of $5,000 toward an overall project cost of $11,935. Make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
Just one comment. In their budget, they have us at 7,500, and that'll put them at a deficit situation, but
Yeah, the the max grants 5,000.
Yeah, so just have to make it up somewhere else. Any questions or comments? Are you none or all in favor? Please indicate by saying aye.
Thank you.
Those same signs. So moved.
Next is an application from the Campbelltown Community Alliance. Uh, their project is um to install 15 reclaimed and refinished vintage half whiskey barrel flower planters along 322, and they will place those at select businesses or walkways along 322 in the village of Campbelltown. Uh, it will be planted with uh greenery for all four seasons. And that's all for the narrative. They're requesting $2,625 of a $3,500 budget.
Make a motion to approve the Campbelltown Alliance Flower Park Restoration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that hotel tax request. Questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs. So moved.
Next uh request from the Carrying Cupboard. They intend to, are they're asking for funding towards the Truck Trek Food Truck and Arts Fest, Central PA. This will be their ninth year. They draw 5,000 to 8,000 people together on Cherry Street in Palmyra for a festival of 10 to 15 food trucks and local arts and business vendors. The uh beneficiary of the event is the uh Carrying Cupboard, and they average about $2,000 in proceeds back to the Carrying Cupboard each year, having raised more than $15,000 for its term. And they are asking for $5,000 of a $15,000 project for expanding marketing uh into neighboring towns in Palmyra.
Make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that request. Questions? Are you none or all in favor? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs. So moved.
Okay, next is a request from the Smatara uh Watershed Association for an extension to a hotel tax tourism fund grant that is intended to be used for the border cabin plus blood restoration. Uh, back in 2022, uh it was grant number five of the year. You had approved $39,750 toward this uh project. And the original expiration of that grant would have been March 3, 2024. They have had delays with the permitting. They were under the impression that it that it was originally issued from DEP, but evidently not. So they have been working towards submission of the permit. Uh, they're working with Chrisland Engineering, and that permit is about to be submitted. And uh, once submitted, DEP may take up to five months to review and permit the application. And if permitted, they will begin with the repairs as long as weather and street conditions permit. So they're asking for a an additional year to March 3 of 2025 to utilize the grant.
Make a motion to um extend the grant request, but this um was submitted the explanation in November of 2023. Are you sure the permit hasn't already been issued?
No, I don't know. I
I kind of think it's ready to go.
Okay.
They just need the time to do it, to execute the wad, the rain, when water was flowing too fast, but maybe I'll but I think that's where they're at.
Same motion.
Yes, I'm sorry. I I was commenting a little before, I guess.
Yeah, if it was going to be pushed out further, because we're down to about probably $15,000 an hour or so, we had fund uh to have them reapplied when they're ready to go. But if it's within this timeframe, I'm supportive of the extension. So any other questions or comments regarding this request? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs. So moved.
Yeah, I have exemption requests for disabled veterans eligible for uh exemption exemption of real estate property tax uh and one surviving spouse. They are Stephen Evangelista of Padovan Drive, Palmyra. Seth Steinmetz of Sweetwater Drive, Palmyra. Elise Wagner of Plymouth Avenue, Jonestown. Barbara Heinem, Blue Mountain Road, Frederickburg, and Francisco Ortiz Martinez of Monticello Drive, Levin.
Motion approved that request.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those disabled veteran requests for property tax exemption. Any questions? Are you none or all in favor? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs. So moved.
And we received a letter from Ray Bender, Chairman of the Governor Dick Board uh requesting reappointment, recommending reappointment uh of Dr. Douglas Becker and David Chip Brightbill for an additional term of three years on the board, which would take their terms to June 30 of 2027.
I'll make a motion to approve those.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve those uh Governor Dick requests. Any questions regarding the motion? Are you none or all in favor? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs. So moved.
Okay, and last item I have, which you added to the agenda, is a letter of support for the Expo Center who is applying for a federal to 2025 Community Appropriation Fund Grant uh through the Agriculture, World Development, Food and Drug Administration for a proposed new expo building project. This goes into the uh details about what is offered at the Expo Center and the what they mean to the community and so on, and and requests that the grant be approved in your in support of it.
Make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve this letter of support. Any questions regarding the motion? Are you none or all in favor? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs. So moved.
And again, you have you have election board tomorrow at 10 a.m. Um, I believe primarily to do tiebreakers on Republican County Committee races. primarily to do tiebreakers on Republican County Committee races where we're right at ties. I'm not sure what else he might have on there, but then you should be, I believe you'll be ready to certify once those are all completed. And there was a email from Dan Seaman about this afternoon's assessment appeals. I think one may have settled.
There were a lot of.
There were only two. Oh, there were four.
There was originally four.
Yeah, two settled, I think, two.
Yeah, so you have yeah, number six has accepted a value. Number seven has withdrawn. Number eight has withdrawn. But number C fourteen is still scheduled for two PM. So he has some exemption requests. So he'd also, he'd still like to start at the one thirty and get those exemptions out of the way first. So.
Right. Anything from the floor? Seek a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you for your attendance and for your input.